I have one, I guess more of a question mark, I'm intending to change. Does item thirteen need to be moved before the zoning?
No, we decided to leave it.
Can we do that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The African made that request for the zone, zone part five at the time that was in the reading, or in existence, so it's not a problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then, does anybody else have any changes? This is a work session, we usually don't do any work sessions.
Oh, I grabbed the wrong one, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry you didn't play.
I'm gonna pause this.
That's all I've wanted to be.
I, no, I, I have my phone.
Alright, I am going to make a motion that the agenda be approved. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Brings us to our discussion items. Is Chief West here? Don't see him, okay? Parts are ready, Jody.
Good morning, just up there real quick, the outdoor court, mask of law court is, is finished, except for waiting on goals. So ordered to go through in defense. Little Bobby Pavilion has been renovated. I'm waiting on the control access doors that we got throughout the park. And then we'll install two cameras to help with the vandalism stuff. Other than that, as far as part of the record, we're getting ready to get the pool for May twenty-fourth, so we've got, we're currently working on that. And registration for football cheer, I think it ends May the twentieth. And then, other than that, we've got some pickleball tournament, I think, coming in May, I think there's like two hundred plus pickleballers coming, so we'll have to use the tennis courts and the pickleball courts for that. And we'll end up wrapping up our baseball softball season by the end of this month. And we've got several tournaments in June, I think that we're close to the R B I World Series tournament, the USA softball, and then the G R P A state tournament. So, we've got the recreation state tournament, so, other than that, that's about it.
I'll ask you, just to give them update on the lights, you were checking a different way for the lights for the.
I reached out to Georgia Power yesterday. Busco was, I think it was like forty to fifty thousand on their, what we've got with the other things. The guy has not called me back yet, so I think Georgia Power was the one had it before, which was the solar panel lights. Stephen Weaver gave me his contact information a couple days ago, but I'm waiting to call back, so.
And that was that we leased the poles?
I think, yeah.
Through Georgia Power, so we might be able to do that again.
Yeah, the poles over there previously, Georgia Power reclaimed those and took them, so, because I asked what they meant too, so I'll go back and review those.
I also asked Jody, I've had a couple of people reach out to me through pickleball and baseball parents, about putting in one of the refillable water, not the water fountain that might get vandalized, but the price out, the refillable water bottle, Yelsey knows that are now at a lot of parks and airports and all over, so that athletes, families, everybody can just refill their water bottle, and price that for their city center and the clear break ball field.
And I'll check the process of those and see what I can find out of those, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
And he's hanging around for the soccer field. Agenda item. He's hanging around for the soccer field agenda.
Okay. Whitepath, Mike had some things going on, I figured they couldn't make it. But, update from code enforcement? Alright.
I don't have anything to say, folks.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any, but.
And Charlie, I think same as on the slide.
Okay. Alright. Planning and zoning, Jim?
An airport while you're headed.
Good morning.
An airport while you're headed.
Yeah.
Good morning, everybody. The planning and zoning department, you have my report in writing, but I just wanna hit a few highlights with you. During the month of April, we issued a hundred and eighty-two permits, two hundred and thirty-one inspections. And in our subdivision flat realm, we have Mountain Gate Phase Two, Mountain Gate Phase Three, Shenandoah Phase Four, and Sunrise Mountain under construction. Now, these are preliminary flats, and, and the developers are working on those toward a final flat. And on the final flats, we have Shenandoah Phase One, Shenandoah Phase Two, Shenandoah Phase Three, and if you note there, we have a letter of credit from the developer guaranteeing the finished paving of the roads and the installation of water. In addition to that, as per the, the contract, the pad for the fire station on three eighty-two is completed, and one stage four is connected to Mount Pisco or Round Top Road. The other pad for that fire station will be completed. So, those are winding down. Now, also, I want to point out to you, you didn't know, you have twelve zoning recommendations from the Gilmore County Planning Commission that are on your agenda. Five of them are in the affirmative, and seven of them are denials. And I'm sure you'll act accordingly on all of them. Any questions? Planning and zoning. Okay, on the airport, now this is the first report that you received from me on the airport. During April, we had two hundred and thirty-five operations with a total of a thousand and seventy-three year to date. Now, for the benefit of those that don't know, an operation is any kind of activity on the ramp or runway, takeoffs and landings, touch and goes, refueling, whatever. We have thirteen hangar tenants, we have eleven tie-down or ramp tenants. And for the month of April, we sold two thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars in aviation fuel, four hundred and fifty gallons. The other thing that I want to point out to you as far as the airport is concerned, and in the report that I gave you, the airport improvement grant, which was the grant that we are currently working on or trying to work on, and that is for identif- identification of obstructions in the flight path. That grant has been delayed due to federal funding issues until the state fiscal year of twenty twenty-six. We'll continue to do what we are now required to do, called an I F E, and that is that our airport engineer, which is Troy Engineering, has submitted a proposal to us. What we are now required to do with our airport engineers or any professional that we would contract with there, we are required to do a review or to have someone to do a review of the, the contract. The, the engineer's name is redacted, the reviewer doesn't even know who they are reviewing, but this is a new requirement as compared to the last time of at the airport, that any contract that we would do at the airport has to be a reviewed by an outside party. So, we are continuing to do that, and that is a requirement for F A A funding. The only other thing that I want to discuss with you concerning the airport, this is a manual that was prepared and adopted by your predecessor in May of two thousand six. Now, when I was at the airport before, this was the manual that we went by. And my question to you, because my predecessor's two airport managers after me has not been following this, and I, I want to be sure that we are following it or that we are going to do some amendments to it, because again, this is a requirement for any public airport, which we are. And if you all want to review it, I'll be happy to provide you with copies of it, otherwise I'm gonna follow it.
Well, since it was approved in two thousand six, I think you're gonna have to follow it, but the question I have is, a lot of them have changed since two thousand six, do you have any of my.
Charlie, not, not so much. To give you an example, if, if we are renting hangar space to a tenant, then there's a written lease that they're supposed to execute. The same is true with tie-down space. There's a written lease and, and a set of rules that they conduct, that guides them and how they conduct themselves at the airport. It, it's, it's more of a guide than anything else, and I'd be happy for you, you, you had it, or Ed Winham would have it in the, in the documents. The other thing that, and, and we've, we've briefly talked about this, when, when we opened the airport in two thousand five, or reopened it, and finished the construction on the two buildings that we have there, the first document, document that we had there was a fixed base operator. The county went and entered into a contract with a F B O, the acronym, and they actually operated every, the fuel, the two buildings, and things like that. Now, we were still responsible for runway ramp improvements, because they can't receive grants, we can't. But, one of the things that I, I think we should look at somewhere down the road, maybe this time next year, is putting the airport out for bid for a fixed base operator. Now, the fixed base operator would have control of all of the hangar space, the office space, the fueling system, and that, that's how they earn their revenue. We would have responsibility for the runway, the ramp area, the maintenance and upkeep, runway lights, pappies and things of that nature. But I think it's something that we certainly should explore. The last fixed base operator that we had there was a fellow by the name of Dave Isom, and unfortunately, and Dave was an aviator and, and a good F B O. Unfortunately, Dave developed leukemia, the second year he was in the lease and died shortly after that. His wife tried to continue on with the operation, and to no success, she, she knew nothing about aviation. And so, they gave up their, their lease, and that's when the county actually took over again the operation of the airport. But I think it's something that you all should be thinking about down the road to, and F B Os are very common in the general aviation field, so it's not anything new. And I think it would be beneficial for us to explore that possibility again. I'll answer any questions that you might have.
I'm good. I have several.
Thank you.
Oh, Jim, Jim, I do have a few.
Oh, okay.
Thanks for clarifying what F B O was, because that was my first one, but the airport manual, I am in agreement with Charlie, if you could go through that and see if there are any changes that need, might need to be made, and then share with the commissioners, then we can review it.
I'll be, I'll be, I'll be happy to do that, and, and I've been through it. I don't see anything, but our, our legal counsel and you all, if there's any updates that need to be made, then we should keep it updated, because it's, it's our guide for how the airport is operated.
Sure, okay, good. The other question I have is about the I S O audit, any news on that?
The I S O, you talking about for planning and zoning?
No, for, well, you know what, maybe I am.
Yeah.
Yep, I am.
Yeah, the, the I S O audit, we came back in class nine, and, you know, that, the reason for that, Carlene, was basically during that five-year period that we were audit for, there was a period that I wasn't the director, that we had inspectors that were not completely certified.
That's taken care of.
And that's taken care of.
Right, okay.
And we have a, one of the things that we've done, Carlene, that we didn't get credit, is we now have a professional services agreement with a company called Bureau Veratops. So, any inspection or, or planned reviews or whatever that come to us that we're not qualified to do, then we call on them and their professional services agreement with us for them to conduct that service.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim. Public safety, Chief West.
We, we are operating pretty much as normal. We did have a meeting yesterday with the people that built the lighter truck, and we went over all that, told them we wanted it laid out, camped it wise and shelved wise, stuff like that. It will be ready a little earlier than we suspected, so we'll ask if there's a group of three or four people that's pulling down on the nineteenth of this month to inspect it, and then we'll get it decalled up and take delivery of it hopefully by middle of June. Anybody have any questions for?
I have one, I was gonna see you before the meeting, but I didn't see you before.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I went over to the commissioner's office.
Oh, that's all right. There, the senior center has asked me several times at different nonprofit meetings that I'm at, they have an A E D, I'm not saying that's right, and they would love to have training on how to use it.
Absolutely.
Can you help out with that? I keep forgetting to mention that, thank you.
Thank you. Facility maintenance area.
Good morning, everybody. As usual, this time of year, we are already having some issues with H B C at the courthouse, but we're thinking it's just, most of it's the older stuff, we don't really have any problems with the new stuff we got in, so the guys are actually checking on that right now. The units on the third floor, I think will be done, the new building should be done today. They're, they're very close to that. I spoke with Charlie yesterday, there's some water pressure issues at the new building, so I've talked to the old, their maintenance guy, they've had issues, I've talked to Piedmont, they said they've had issues, so what I'm gonna do, and I mentioned something to David, we're gonna try to track down blueprints. If we get the blueprints, we can try to find out where everything is in there, since it's new. We're thinking there's circulating pumps somewhere that aren't working, but we have no clue where, where they're at, and their, their maintenance guy doesn't have any idea where they're at, so we're gonna try to get blueprints for those, get that taken care of. I know where you're gonna speak about the health department roof later, I don't know if you want input from me later on any of that stuff, just, there are.
Go ahead.
Huh?
You can go ahead with it.
Okay, but just, I know some of what we've got in, if you're careful and look at that, some of the stuff that we've got in from the people, they're gonna cover things that other people aren't, like soffit and fascia and stuff like that, that's not included in some of the other quotes. So, that's just something that I keep in mind with those. We're having an issue with homeless people over at the new building. We actually went up to the maintenance building, we're doing some work outside of it yesterday, and the air conditioning unit was just humming, which isn't right, so as we walked around a little more, the breaker boxes that are on the outside and the disconnects that all been open, breakers have been turned off, and the disconnects have been pulled out. So, I put padlocks on those, but we also have it, we know, and we've been told by Piedmont, that there's issues with that down by the community hall, so I don't know if it's something we can discuss with sheriff's department or city police, if they can patrol through there.
I mentioned it to Stacy last night, but you mentioned we're building two, trying to, to patrol up there.
Yeah, they'll just check it, because, and we were told by Piedmont's people that they go down by the community building, and they'll employ things outside because they can blow their phones in to charge them overnight, they might stay in their cars down there, so it's just, just something that we're aware of. That's what, I don't know, I just, we had discussed signage, so I'll probably get with you about new signage for the new building. I mentioned to her yesterday, the trucks that we see at the end all the time, I talked to Piedmont, and they said that those are local contractors, that Piedmont has just never really said anything to them, but there's about seven trucks that park down at that far end, and I'm thinking probably by the time the sheriff's department and all that moves in, we're not gonna have open spaces for those people, so I don't know if it's something we can have David write something up, and we can put it on their vehicles, or if we just put signage up and see what happens, but just so we're aware, there's people that are used to parking there like a parking rite kind of thing, so they just use the parking lot for that.
I think we start with the signage is.
And go from there. I found out yesterday, they had some, which she knew about, some flooding at the new building in the Piedmont area last Friday, Thursday, I think, and it was from some of their toilets, so I talked to Randy yesterday, he said the issue that he thinks they've got over there is a lot of the toilets in their area are pressurized tank, they got a pressurized tank in them, and he said they're not like a normal toilet, and they don't have enough pressure, so he said when you flush the toilet, if there's a lot of paper in it, it only goes so far down the pipe, and then eventually it backs up, so he said they've had a lot of problems, he asked Piedmont about this replacement with normal toilets, and of course, they said, well, no, we're gonna be getting rid of the building, so we're not worried about it, so I don't know if that's something we wanna look at, I mean, it's probably a couple hundred dollars to replace the toilet, we could get an idea of what it would cost to replace those, that way we won't have to worry about.
Well, why would we need, why would they need pressurized toilets there?
The ones that, they even threw some out when they first got in there, I had never seen them before, but they just got a little bladder tank in them, but he said the water pressure and the little pressure in the buildings.
That's okay.
He said they didn't have them, but he said now that you've got toilets that are one gallon flush and stuff like that to flush better, he said just buying a normal toilet should take care of that problem.
Well, that plus we need to find out what the problem is with.
Right, with the water pressure. So, just so that's something that everybody's in, or knows about. We just got a new water heater installed in the D A's office, they finished that yesterday. We got new pumps and grinders at Station One for the subjects, so that should be good for ten to twelve years. Community hall is going to be painted, the new community hall, I call it community hall, I don't know if the people know that I call it community hall.
Everyone else calls it the community center, but whatever you want.
That will be painted June eleventh through the fourteenth, and that new building, the new buildings over there, they're gonna pressure wash May thirtieth through June first. I'm still waiting on quotes, I sent a message this morning to one of the quotes that's outstanding for the community hall over there, the roof, because when it rains heavy, we've got some leaks in there, and we need to try to get that roof taken care of before it just destroys the inside of it. I mean, it's not flooding it by any means, but it's, well, you've probably seen it, there's a couple spots that you can see where the water's coming through and through, and then the ceiling tiles and stuff, so, so we need to get that, as soon as we get those quotes. I had a request from Highland Rivers for the trees behind their building, and I think from what I found out about seven years ago, those trees grow towards the building and the power lines, the last time, I think Jim will know, I think you had the, the road department, I think you and DJ got a deal worked out where you want to push the trees behind Highland Rivers, did you, did you have the road department guys do that? So, I don't know if Ryan, no, I know Ryan's got a million things, but I don't know if that's something we could get worked out so they don't get into the power lines around it.
We've got a tree coder that can handle it now, I think.
So, if we can get that scheduled, I told them I would, I was gonna be talking to you today, so I can let them know. And then the last thing I got is just housekeeping, the last time we talked, we were down to two housekeepers, this week we're down to one housekeeper. We have Cheryl's here this week, we have ones out at M L A until the end of June, and Cheryl's here, and we have one that's sick with COVID, pneumonia and strep throat, so she will be out of this completely this week. We are supposed to get a new one that's supposed to start on Monday, we're gonna have two, but we haven't heard back from one of them, though it's part-time, so, next week we should have another, or housekeeper here. That's all I got.
Eric, I've got one thing I want to ask about.
Yep.
In the community center, in that kitchen.
Yep.
That little platform that the ice mowers sits on.
Yep.
The one that we have, the ice mowers smaller, and it, it exposes some of that platform, could we put some kind of reflective tape or something to keep that off, to kind of blend in?
Yep. We buy yellow tape, just put yellow tape around it. Yep.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Perfect work, right?
Good morning. Let's see here, road department, recently, we have a job task, need to do some work on Highland Rivers. Thank you, Eric. We are still working on repairing the damage from the landslides, we had that one out on Bortown, we got that one fixed up. We've got, used the, the large boulders to fell and block traffic on that to rebuild on Bates Road, we're making progress on those. When it's not raining, we're working on mowing operations, and we're trying to pave when the sun is shining right now, so we try to get ahead of that. Working on potholes, ditches, culverts and trees as fast as possible. This weather is not being our friend, most of our stuff being outside. On solid waste side of things, we met with the Waste Pro representatives and began negotiations for services on that one, for a new contract with them, and we're expecting to get a pricing from them within the next week, so we have presented to you all, we can talk about that. If you all got any questions for me, I'm trying to keep it brief.
I have a couple of comments. First of all, when driving around the county for these zoning requests, there were, it was so nice to see so many pretty roads, and the striping and the paving, so kudos to you, and thank you.
I'll pass it on to my guys, they're the ones doing all the hard work.
Yeah, and then I, I think we all had an email about a question about landslides on Whitepath Road, are those in your list of.
Yes, it is one of them, yep. I got Whitepath, Lucius Road, Apple Country Lane, and then we had Bortown and Bates Road, but those are the ones that have been working on, and then the small one on Little Rock Creek.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
Yeah, Bert.
Animal shelter, Kelly.
Good morning, everyone. We're basically day-to-day operations, business as usual. I got a couple things I'll touch on for you guys, get you caught up. Transports, we went to New Jersey last week with only six dogs. They, they limited us out, you know, at six to eight this month, it was only six. But anyway, they landed safely, and then we had eight cats transport down to a couple of Atlanta rescues. And then we have Atlanta Humane coming up on the twentieth. That'll be mostly dogs, puppies under twenty pounds. So it's not huge, but it's helpful. Adams Mosquito, they, they did, they are helping us out, giving us free, free sprays for mosquitoes, fleas, and ticks. They, the owner, Todd, found a dog and helped us out, you know, by keeping the dog. We just provided all the services that we could for him. He was happy to keep the dog, so in return, he's given us free, free sprays for the summer and beyond. And then also, he's given complimentary one-time sprays to anybody that adopts from us.
Is that mosquito authority, Todd Adamson?
Yeah.
Okay, that's who that was.
Yeah, I think I said Adams, but Adamson, yeah, that's, yeah.
I just wanted to give them kudos, because they're a great company, and that's awesome, they're doing that.
Yes, they are, they are. In regards to animal control, staying on top of calls. I don't think they've issued any citations so far this month, a lot of warnings. So go back and follow up on those, and make sure that people are doing as we ask. And if they are, great, if not, then we'll be issuing citations as necessary. We've had a lot of intakes due to arrests recently, and a lot of hospitalizations. Snippet bus, we're getting that set up for June second, third of this month. We've been working with one of the people at the food pantry to get a list of lower-income folks that need the help the most. So far, we've had great response to that, so we expect that to be great turnout. Other than that, kitten season is upon us. We did twenty-three intakes of kittens yesterday, yeah.
Can I ask a question about the snippet bus?
Sure.
We had a cat dropped off on our farm a couple of months ago that I thought was gonna hang out, and he was not fixed, and all of our cats are. Does the snippet bus, do you take reservations, or how does that work? Can you just show up?
So, no, it's gotta be scheduled ahead of time. And for this two days, it's already full.
Okay.
So, I mean, I can help you out with some other low-cost in the area.
Well, the cat has not been around now, I don't think my cat scared it away, but we were gonna, I didn't wanna, I didn't know if it was a neighbor's or how it appeared. But it hung for a couple of weeks, and now it sort of vanished in the last week, so. But we were about to just grab it and go take it to be fixed, so I didn't know.
Yeah, so we hope to do it again. My plan was Epen, LJ Plaza, me, they had asked me back in December, what did I want from Sand Plaza this year? How's that I want the snippet bus out here as frequently as possible? So they have raised a lot of money to help out with that. I wanted it like every quarter, and so far, we're on track. We had it out in March, and now again in June, and we'll look at it from September and December as future dates. And that's about all I have.
That's fantastic, I watched it here, it's so full.
How many are being served, when they come?
So it's scheduled by time, like they, like they give a lot of, well, you get three hundred and sixty minutes for, it keeps going up, I think it's thirty-six hundred dollars now. So it's like a cat neuter, five minutes, cat spay, fifteen minutes, dog neuter, I think it's fifteen minutes, dog spay, thirty minutes. So, you know, you just schedule it by the times, so that varies.
Yeah, it probably takes a while, thanks Christ.
It does, it does.
Do you guys wanna talk about the possible green space? Did you guys wanna talk about that yet? Did you all get that email?
Well, I think that's something that Epen is pursuing, so I'd like for them to be involved.
Perfect, I didn't, I didn't know if that was something we were bringing up. It wasn't on the agenda, but I thought you might bring it up.
Yeah. Well, I said, I think that's something that they're heading up, so I don't wanna speak out of turn, so.
Okay, thank you, Kelly.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that's gonna bring us to discussion, possible action on soccer field grant. Commissioner first.
Yes, we have, Jared, you may wanna come up, because I'm probably gonna refer to you. And we are, we, let me see who this is. This is actually, the regional commission reached out to us about this grant that, you know, Atlanta United is doing. And they are trying to provide more soccer field space, better soccer field for underserved communities, before, specifically before the World Cup comes to Georgia in 2026. So we have, we looked at, now we, the we I'm referring to is the parking rec board, and they created a committee to look at the potential or the possibility, or should we do this? And they, that committee is headed up by Jason Smith. He is working with Samantha at the regional commission and Trac. There has to be a nonprofit involved in this. So I gotta give kudos to Larry Lykens, who has really stepped up, because he's not, you know, he has a senior that's graduating, that's playing on our soccer team right now. But Trac agreed to be the nonprofit for this grant, if it would work out, and it's a fifty-fifty match, up to the, to either build a new soccer field or repair or replace a soccer field, an existing soccer field that we have. And with that being said, the partners in this would be the county, Trac, the regional commission is writing the grant, and the River Park funds are available if we choose to move forward with it. Did you all get the video that I tried to send? Didn't look like it was sending to YouTube, personal, so, I mean, okay. I'm gonna pass this down, because you need to see it. This is the, I walked the soccer field that we're considering, sorry. It is the original soccer field that was created and started with the partnership, not Pilgrim's, but Gold Coast before. So we have not spent any kind of real money on the soccer program, and tell me if I'm wrong, in the last twenty-five years since that soccer program started.
Is this still on Veterans Bridge?
Correct, yes, that's the main field, so. On the other side of Veterans Bridge, right. It's called, it's on Soccer Field Road, and it's the main large field. There's some pros and cons to this. One is we're so limited to soccer field playing space. But we have several hundred kids and more adults playing in the soccer program. And the, correct me, the mountain league is who runs it?
The UFA, yes.
UFA?
They organize as far as the games, officials, stuff like that, we just maintain the feeling.
Right, and they pay a certain amount per?
Yes, a certain amount per player.
Correct, right. So I think it's a decision now for the commissioners to make. There, if it's worth putting the money and investment, this would, we, I have, I did not share this proposal, and I can certainly share it out. This was from Jason that sent it to me this week. He's out of town, or he would have been here with work. And the quote comes to a hundred and seventy-seven thousand for replacing and putting in new sod and irrigation system, everything. So the county would be part, would be responsible for half of that, and that's eighty-eight thousand five hundred. There are the funds and the River Park grant for that, but it is a significant amount of money. We were all hoping, I think, that we might be able to have more soccer field space rather than just redoing one that we have. But when I walked the field, you can see the field is not in great shape now. And so I think it's, we just need to decide if it's worth the investment. Of course, this is also just applying for the grant. We don't know if we'll get it or not, but the, and I've talked to Jody, and we've kinda gone back and forth, and I think the whole park board feels that, I'll let you speak.
Well, and I think the problem is, is the wear and tear, because you're playing fall, playing spring, and then you've got a goat's spleen. So they, if we, if we saw this and put irrigation in, that means something's gotta yield. So that, that field will have to rest time. I've talked to Mike Grumby about this, and Matt Watkins, who does a lot of sod and landscape. So you run the risk of losing one of those to keep the grass there. There's nothing that you're gonna build, from what they told me, to build a plant, to keep it as much as we use it, to keep it there and growing, unless you close the field for a period of time. So that's the con part, but we can do that. We can rope it off and say field's under maintenance, or what have you. I know the older group uses the high school field for their games, so, you know, again, it's a lot to, for you all to make a decision. So my question is also this, about the River Park grant. I guess this would be for you, David, going across the bridge to the soccer field. Is that considered, this would be the DNR grant?
Yeah, I'd have to, I can look at the terms of that grant, but I would suspect that it's in the same.
Okay. Yeah. That, yeah, somebody asked me about that yesterday, and I thought, I don't know, I need to ask you about that. But we'll do whatever you guys want.
I guess the question that I have is, if this is something that's going to be fragile, what are the odds that we could spend eighty-eight thousand dollars in a couple of years so now we're looking at the same kind of situation?
Well, I think that's what would end up happening, unless we close it, like I said, for either spring or fall, you're gonna go with that time, it's growing. It's gonna come to a limit at some point.
So we can have a good field if people don't use it.
Yeah, basically. As far as the wear and tear, but I mean, now, it would obviously improve it. But we, we almost need another field, like you were speaking to, to where we can move them to play that season, to have this field house of rest, so.
That being the case, I would almost come down on the side of, if we do the grant, doing it for our second field, and I understand this one's in bad shape, but if we're gonna have to close this off for people to use for a significant period of time, if we only have the one, maybe we'd be better off to have this one that's in not great shape, but use the grant funds if we were to get it for a second field, it could be in good shape. And then we could start going back and forth, and then maybe rest in the fields without, without putting them off limits to anybody.
And that's kind of what we discussed at our last advisory board meeting, where the multi, the green space area over on River Park side, which I told them, the challenge with that, as much, as many people, as much foot traffic as there, you just can't keep people off of that area, because it's used so much. So that was one of the options that we kinda tossed around to see if we could play from River Park side, while this one's getting rest, and then flip them back, so.
And there is, there is some space at Clear Creek, but then we can't use the River Park grant money, funds, for, you know, so that was the.
I guess you did, yeah.
Yeah. The, this field is the larger field, and then there are two smaller fields that kids, younger age kids play on. In one way, you know, it's several hundred players, students, and then more adults, a couple hundred probably in the men's league, but.
Two to three.
Two to three hundred. And we haven't spent any money investing into that soccer facility at all.
And I'm not telling you to spend the money, I'm just saying.
I agree with Charlie.
If we have to shut, if we're gonna have to close the field off for a significant time, it seems counterproductive to me.
No, what if we use the multipurpose field for the off-season over at Clear Creek? Is there a season? Because I know baseball runs into it.
The only thing that that field right now is used for is the overflow parking, because and we got tournaments, like, we hosted one this past month, and that whole field was lined up with campers and stuff like that. So right now, people are having to use that to park on it. Of course, now we can fix that by putting up events or what have you.
So, and when do those events happen?
Well, the month of June, we got one every weekend.
Okay, and soccer is spring and fall?
Yes.
So if we could use a, that all-purpose field, spring and fall, for overflow soccer, and line it, it wouldn't matter for summer?
Right, but right now, they, that would have to, I mean, we would have to do some work with that field, because it's pretty rough.
Yeah, that's what I see, that, yeah, it's gonna take a while to get something established, and even lay a sod down, that's, that, that area out there, just the grass does not grow well.
Yeah, well, you know, I don't mean, I appreciate all the men that play, but how desperate are the men, like, think they play on anything?
Well, that's true, now, they didn't play Sunday, they didn't play Sunday over at Soccer Field Road. They played on the green space area.
Which, like, Clear Creek?
No, in town, at River Park. So where our old field, too, baseball field was, they had two soccer fields set up, and they were playing there, and they were in uniforms for their men. So they actually done that on their own, because they don't wanna destroy the field either.
Uh-huh.
What's your timeline to react to the sound?
Next week.
I, I think maybe fifteen is for them. I've been working with Sam Bishop on Samantha. I've got her what I need, but, and I think Larry Lykens is pretty much what he needs as far as applying for the grant. She did send me a form saying that the county had to guess the assignment to say that we're gonna be responsible. I think it was eighty-eight thousand on our part for the irrigation and sod. And I think there's probably right at a hundred thousand left in the DNR grant, if I'm not mistaken, so.
But all the other, most of the other requests for that money through baseball and all are met and fulfilled, and basketball court?
Yes, yeah.
That the park board wanted to have done.
Was that not the money that we were looking to use for the light swam field?
Yeah, and that's, we took that in consideration with talking to Georgia Power. Might be able to bring the lights costs down on that.
We won't know that anytime for the grant, though.
That's correct.
I mean, we could, we could go ahead and apply for the grant, even if we got it, we wouldn't have to take it.
True, could turn it down.
Given the fact that we have to, if we do it or don't, financially.
What would we have to do?
You know, I, my granddaughter plays soccer now, I'm in it, so I've gone to some of their soccer fields. Their practice fields are not, you know, terrific, they're just fields. So maybe utilizing some of their great space for practice field in that extra field that's not being used. I mean, I don't know how bad David's saying it's bad, but just to prevent the wear, the constant wear on those fields on Soccer Field Road. And of course, we looked into turf, and that's not possible. But our soccer program is growing, and, you know, I looked at it as we haven't spent money or invested in that program in a long time, so.
If we decide to go ahead and apply for the grant, speculation is there?
Right.
What, what is next step, what we have to do in the morning?
Vote to move forward to apply.
I see it.
Uh-huh, yeah, and working with Trac and the regional commission, same. And then, but you're exactly right, I mean, we can turn it down if we find out that the funds we need for lights, or that doesn't work out. And, and really maybe considering possibly some area over at Clear Creek that might be able to be used for soccer.
What is the timeline for the grant, how many people get it?
Do you know?
I think they make the decision maybe June, July, if I'm not mistaken, I can't remember. I'd have to look.
You know, and those men that play, they are more than willing, I've spoken to several of them, and they would love to pay to play wherever they could pay to play. And they're like, we have money, we just want a place to play. They don't wanna hurt our fields or parks, they just wanna play.
And they have been playing, and they have, they have one big tournament a year, and then I think they may do something with parking, and he grants us a percentage of it. So I always write it in as a donation, I deposit it, so there is.
But there's a good relationship with them.
Yes, and he helps line the fields, he helps, he's the one that plays the grass.
We don't have time. I'd say let's apply for it, we probably don't have time to, to, he can do anything, but we just say, yeah.
Right, I'll just focus.
Okay, thank you, Jared.
All right, thank you. Discussion, possible action on light pollution.
David, were you there, I should have.
Y'all, they also asked us to begin the process, and I don't have anything to you. I think Corinne gave us a, a generated document.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I will take a look at it, I'll take a look at it, maybe build some stuff or do it, but it makes it, it was impressive to begin with, so it's the least established, uh, something to grant.
So what, what will be our, our action for the moment?
There won't be any action, it's at this point in time, because y'all don't have an actual ordinance. I'll get that, it's of some sort to, uh, probably for a, a.
Okay, all right. Okay, anything else on that? Okay, fun stuff. Now, there are several on here, I believe Jim said it was seven, that the planning board had recommended denial. Uh, were there any of those that y'all disagreed with that?
Of the denials?
Of the denials, so, uh, let's just say that then for those that are recommended denial, we're good with that. And that just leaves us with the, the others to discuss here. Um, we will take those one at a time, the first one is for Shaker, back is church, seven four one nine acres from A one to P I one to combine with church property. Okay, I'm good with that. Next one is for Deborah Ellis, five four nine oh, R one to A one to compound with adjacent track, good with that, okay. Ralph Upton and Frank Bradshaw, sixty-seven point six nine acres, A one to R one, I'm sorry, it's a denial, denial, denial. Okay, the next one is.
Next one would be number six, Charlie.
Yeah, I got it here. Lauren Minn, fourteen point five nine, R one to A one, residence in a hobby farm, there were no objections to that one. What are your thoughts on that?
I'm in agreement, I'm with accepting that.
Okay, I'd be good with that. Case seven. Right, the next one I believe will be number eleven. I know y'all will keep me honest, don't you, it's number eleven? Cusawati Properties, uh, six point four seven acres, uh, no real, stipulation now, wherever is requesting R five after a DNA section. I have concerns on that one.
I do as well.
So, um, I'll make sure, um, you know. And, and I mentioned most of my concerns really yesterday. This is, um, on the sixty percent income limits, a single person there couldn't make over thirty-six thousand, two people couldn't make over forty-one, uh, two-income household cannot make over forty-six, seven. My concern is that basically these limitations, you know, I, I keep hearing firemen, deputies, and teachers, and I understand that there's others than just firemen, deputies, and teachers, but those are, that's the mantra, we've got to have it. Affordable housing for firemen, deputies, and teachers. This locks everyone, almost every one of those categories out. A beginning teacher might qualify for this, but, um, these limits are low enough that, uh, if you're a two-income home, you probably are gonna be making enough that you wouldn't qualify to get into one of these, uh, you're not making enough that you could afford something with what you're making, but you're making too much to be able to get into one of these with these limitations in place, and that concerns me a lot.
I'm not going to interrupt you.
Yeah, go ahead.
As you say, sixty percent of A nine, as AMI increases, this will increase too.
Right, but as AMI increases so well, the deputy and, and teachers pays and so forth, and it can still be, I mean, one goes up and so does the other, and it's still like that.
Not necessarily with AMI, um, I would argue that, because AMI is being influenced by the retirees and people that have moved here with, uh, higher income. Our AMI is almost at seventy-nine thousand dollars a month, uh, a year now, so I'm seeing that and so that, um, I know, I do see Joe and Phil, the developers, out in the audience to answer any questions we have, so if we want to ask them to clarify that, what the income, but I'd also argue that, yes, thankfully, we're able to pay our firemen and, um, service first responders more money, and that's great, they totally deserve it. But we've also got, um, our superintendent, I know, was here at the planning commission meeting and did not get to speak. The support staff of the school system, there are many that make this amount of money, and he is not able to hire first-year teachers because there is no place for them to live. So these first-year teachers, these, these are rentable, apartment rentals, this is not supposed to be a permanent home necessarily for these people. These are coming right out of college, come back home, you want to teach, here's an apartment that you can live in, which we have none of, um, now for our first-year teachers. I would say even our first-year police officers and, and that kind of things as well. These are our librarians, we just increased their salary at the public library and they're paying, um, or help them to do that. We saw what they make, on during TV, they don't make, they wouldn't qualify for this.
If their, if their spouse doesn't make enough.
Yeah, and not everyone is making, there are a lot of single people, and this actually could be for, um, a senior even, and, and in the fifty units, there are forty units that are at that rate, and then ten units that call, that are market rate. So anyone with ten units, I spoke to Donna Reese with Piedmont, and she is thrilled with the possibility of the development being there. She also clarified that they are putting an R-turn, um, into the, um, Mountain View onto five fifteen there, so they are working with DOT already on the R-turn going in. Piedmont was hoping for a traffic light, but, um, they're.
Looking, did we ever get anything saying that, um, the city has changed their stance on it?
I, I didn't receive anything.
No, I, uh, I spoke to the mayor last night and he's willing to write that, he said, I've already given it to you by way of Larry Callahan, but if you need something additional. What he is, he is requesting is the turn lane. Um, I also want to clarify, and I reached out to every single one of our planning commission members, and several are here today because they questioned what I asked them, and I called them and what I asked them first name was, what did you agree to, what did you vote on when, in reference to the Steve West property, the night of the planning commission meeting? Because I read through the minutes several times and I never saw the wording that actually came out from you, David, after that meeting. I never saw the wording of that in the minutes, and when I asked each, each planning commission member on the phone last night, tell me what you voted for, what condition did you think you were voting for? They all said, I, we voted unanimously, or we, I voted unanimously, that I wanted this project to move forward, and I voted for the turn lane to be put in on Cusawati Drive onto five fifteen. And the developers seemed comfortable with doing that, and that's what East El J had requested in the notes that they had. When I showed them the difference of what actually came out of the meeting, they were pretty shocked. And I will say they're here, three of them I see, two which are happy to answer any questions about that, but they had no idea this extra conditioning was going to be placed. And they haven't even seen the minutes yet that we saw because they don't vote on those till next month. So they were concerned, they, each member of that planning commission is in favor of this project moving forward, and Piedmont Hospital is in favor, Dr. Ridley with our school superintendent is in favor. I think this community is asking for this project, and if we limit this to not be able to provide it, it's a real shame to fifty of our citizens in this community.
I am gonna mention a couple of other things, I, I, obviously, I'm sure, figured out by now, I'm gonna be in the know on this, but, um, I'm not trying to influence y'all anyway. I just want to give my concerns, and I also am more than a little concerned with the fact that this was apparently denied by the city, and the go-to on that, and this seems to be more and more prevalent, is if we're the city and the city denies us, we'll just do annex and Kalam County can do it. I don't want to be the go-to person for, or county for denials, uh, or things that people want to do in the city, uh, and I think that's what this is. So there's a, there's a number of concerns that I have, and as I say, I'm gonna be in the know on this, but that's.
I, I agree, I don't want to, I don't want to see, um, all of the de-annexations coming our way. I, um, so I agree completely with you on that, I think this project is something that the community needs and the East El J has said that they will not, um, go against it if the turn lane is put in on Cusawati Drive, and that's the mayor.
The people that we talked to yesterday, and this is on a different project from this, indicated that there were things that could be done to ensure that, uh, whatever was put in place was for the people here. Is there anything we can do with this to ensure that, uh, we're not just building fifty units for people from Fulton and DeKalb and so forth to come here? That we're building them for our own people, are there, are there things that we can do to, to keep it in-house, so to speak?
I will just tell you that I was on, um, actually still, um, we graduated from the GIC team and was part of, um, selecting this developer for the, uh, El J Overlook property. And that was when I was not serving as commissioner. And, um, when we looked at this developer, we called and I specifically reached out to a couple of the, uh, communities that they've built for in the past, and they were overwhelmingly saying, no, it was so great because they worked with our community, knowing the church leaders and the stakeholders in the community to be able to announce, to put on the fence around the property, the phone number to call when you can first start calling to apply for the property, for the apartments. So this is the way this, um, developer handles this, they put the phone number up on the fence, and if they, every name that requests to be in there, it is put in a queue and you're accepted in way of that, that's the way the management team. So that we're able to get the word out to our churches, our school superintendent, all over the community, and let them know this number and that this date before it goes live publicly on the deeps and the depths of the public page. So there is that, but there are also, Charlie, we have seven hundred citizens that qualify in this price point, in this price range for this development, seven hundred of our own.
All the more reason we don't need fifty Decatur and Fulton people coming here.
I think you totally know that I do not want fifty Decatur.
I understand that, what I'm asking is if, can we effectively prevent it?
So, we're doing, can, because of fair housing, you can't prevent anything?
That's, that's my concern.
But the fact that, I don't know that Atlanta, people that are moving into this type of housing, that probably don't have transportation and rely on public transportation and they're used to city things, I don't know that we're gonna have this bombardment of these people that want to be in these really what, what would be fifty or forty units, um, in that price range. So I, I don't think, because we have seven hundred here of our own, and there, we let the community know when they can start follow-up, applying. Um, I'll tell you also, something Habitat for Humanity is doing, we're gonna start doing courses for citizens here because we have several different projects starting up and just for future repair, repair, um, on, to help them with their credit. So, because these communities are managed for thirty years by these developers, they're not a build-it-and-buy-bye kind of project, um, or developer. They manage these properties for thirty years or they lose their tax credit, and that's not what they want to happen either. The communities that I spoke to, they were thrilled with this developer, which is why we selected this developer for El J Overlook. And the, the way they handle, their management team handles it, we believe was the best option for our community.
Um, I'm gonna echo what Commissioner Ferguson said, and these kinds of developments have been built in many, many, many communities, and they get consumed locally before anybody gets a chance, and just repeating what she's saying, but I want, uh, I've spoken to commissioners in other places that they're completely happy with this, that this, this program, this, um, tax credit program, it has been successful in many other places, and they remain successful because they're monitored, because someone's looking over their shoulder, and they do stay in the field. Um, as one of the commissioners said, well, after they build these things, they don't live out, they, they get carried out. It's a big white bullet, they just, they stay there until.
Anything else on this one?
Um, did you have any questions for developers you wanted to go and ask specifically? Um, I, I do, um, I do want to make aware again that what the planning commission voted for was just for the turn lane, so I am in favor of using the language. This recommendation is conditioned that the Mountain View Terrace project includes a right turn lane along Cusawati Drive at its intersection with Highway five fifteen, meeting Georgia Department of Transportation specifications contingent upon DOTs, but, um, I don't think the wording and, um, if there's anyone from the planning commission that wants to, I don't want to speak for you, but if you want to speak on this, I don't know if it's appropriate now or wait till Susan's pushing to speak? Does anyone from the planning commission want? You're all gonna be shocked.
I'm just changing language.
Again, I, I recall this differently, but, uh, and I, but, you know, I'm, the board has that discretion to pick whatever recommendation they want to with the commission there. So, uh, it's the city of East El J Road, that's the most important thing, is to ensure that the East El J is comfortable with the provisions with respect to whatever means of exit and entrance that occurs on the development.
Would we still need the, 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 to state, they're good with their language?
Uh, you can choose to move forward without it, uh, but again, it's, it'll be a county project at the end of the day, and if, uh, there are issues, then it would be nice to have something from the city on their letter, make sure that there's no, because again, it looks like there could be, you know, could be potential something somewhere down the road that may build. Now, all that is conditioned, I'm, I'm guessing the groundbreaking will occur immediately.
When you, uh, apply for a tax credit, you have a certain amount of time, you have to get this done or you don't, you know, receive the tax credit, and any reputable developer that does this kind of project is gonna want to make sure that they can sufficiently meet those deadlines, so.
Which, which would suggest that, that the infrastructure, the necessary traffic infrastructure would be following the development? Right?
Yes.
Could be at the end of the cycle.
Wait, say again?
The necessary infrastructure of traffic engineering would be subsequent to the groundbreaking.
I don't know, you know, okay, I would love for Joe, if you want to come up and respond to that. I don't want to speak for, I'm gonna speak.
Good morning, I'm, I'm Joe Collins with Palin. No, when we typically do these, this happens often, it's typically handled during the building permit process, when plans are reviewed, ingress, egress, all of those specific issues are built with the developer. So we can't do it before, uh, our funders would not allow that, it wouldn't come after, it's an undetermined time. It would happen as we have our construction crews down the site, we would install the infrastructure we've agreed to.
The, the right turn lane off of Cusawati Drive, what happened?
It would happen as the development's being built prior to, you know, to see the process. Now, this is contingent on DOT working with us and approving it in a timely manner, which can be problematic, but it would not be our, um, it would not be our issue. it would not be our issue. We would work to, with them to get that approval and install it with the development. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
And also to clarify, the, the groundbreaking would not be able to happen until the earliest spring of twenty twenty six. There would be a long time to work with the county and the city of East L J to make sure everyone's comfortable with the, the plan.
But once it, go.
Is it possible then that DOT would not approve what the, the turn lane?
We have not been able to contact DOT yet. We've requested the contact of the city of East L J, have been working with them, haven't gotten that information. We don't see any reason. What East L J has told us is that they are completely amenable to it. They've had preliminary discussions. We would expect they would be completely open to it, but it is a large agency that we have no control over. So we, and they own the property. So we can't promise to know for certain what they will, will say about that stretch. But when we evaluate it, we see no reason and I don't believe the city sees any reason why they wouldn't approve of this short turn lane.
And Mayor Callahan last night said he didn't see, he thought they would approve it, that he.
I just don't see how we could make it a condition if we don't know if it would be approved.
Well, I think it's based on DOT approving it. I mean, that.
So it would be a conditional condition?
This recommendation is conditioned that the Mountain View Terrace project includes a right turn lane along Cusawati Drive at its intersection with five fifteen, meeting Georgia Department of Transportation specifications contingent upon DOT's review and approval of the proposed improvement.
Okay, so if they don't approve it within these terms?
Nobody gives a turn lane if DOT doesn't approve it. We don't have control over that. But Don did not think it would be, I guess they had some prelim, preliminary discussions and they thought they were fine with it. So.
Okay, anything else on this?
Any of you want to speak on, any question, Don? No? Okay.
Matthew Mitchell, six point five oh acres, A one to A one with conditional use for farm lottery. Okay, I want to make sure this is not, it's not, I'm not okay with this one.
They did the condition of the entrance being off Old Five. And I'm okay with it. I agree. Yes, Jen?
Is this the Bodie Road?
Yes.
Yes, yes, it is the Bodie Road and Mr. Mitchell, his project keeps scrolling. And this is his second time to be before the planning commission made it. And the planning commission this time made a requirement or a condition that he readdressed the property to Old Five rather than Bodie Road. Right now, the nine one one address is Bodie Road. So their, their recommendation, and Mr. Mitchell would agree to it, that, that it be readdressed to Old Five, which ensures that the condition of the driveway being off of Old Five will be adhered to and the driveway off of Bodie Road, which absolutely could not handle the traffic being as a service entrance or whatever and not, not for the general public.
I drove up to the property and looked at it and drove Bodie Road again. Completely agree with the planning commission on this.
All right, that brings us to citizens wishing to speak. Anybody that wants to make any comment on any topic, if you would come to the podium and state your name, please.
Hey, we've come to the east with anticipation and not speaking, but somehow you all get me up here. My name is Kimberly Reckless. I'm a concerned Gilmer County citizen. It's not the responsibility of government to solve housing issues. That is a period. That is a socialist concept. It is not that of a free market mindset. It concerns me that we have commissioners on this board who have that mindset, who call themselves Republicans. I would contend Republicans in name only. This is, when you look at Lytech, you know, I'm gonna speak about Lytech housing and corporate welfare in general, which is what this is. Lytech is, Lytech in its original purpose was for your Cabrini Greens in inner cities housing that was falling apart. And it was an attempt to fix the inner cities, issues with inner city housing crumbling. Of course, that was very successful when it was created by Reagan. But somehow that word got around that if you create a joint development authority and you partner them with your, look with your state agency in Georgia, that's the Department of Community Affairs. And you partner with some other investors or you create your own, own investment firm, you can, you too can call it rural development, rural investment. And you're gonna solve some housing issues in the rural communities and bring access to them. You're gonna solve all their problems. All you gotta do is hire yourself a lobbying firm or two and find somebody who's got a connection between the D C A and the U G A preferably. And you peddle this message around the state of Georgia, which is what we've seen. There's not much difference between the Beatty team and what Railsford Dunley where Mr. Collins used to work, right? Their job is to come to you, lobby your, lobby you all, lobby our communities to convince us that we need what they have to sell us. They can get what they want from the federal government. That's what we're looking at here. This is not about solving a housing issue for Gilmer County. This is about a group of people who met behind closed doors to partner with an individual who used to work at D C A, who has access to funding to, to, this, this, this money Georgia grant funding wouldn't even be available wasn't for GIC. There, this is highly competitive funding. This is hard work that went on behind closed doors to bring the, the Douglas Smith and, uh, for the communities here. This didn't happen on its own. They're chasing money to Gilmer County. And that money became available in Gilmer County to projects in Gilmer County when Gilmer County qualified for those funds through this GIC process. There is no way to separate the two. So we're looking at Courier Street, right? We're looking at Courier Street housing now. And Mr. Collins and Mr. Allen are happy to bring us with the assistance of Mr. Frady and the GIC team. And we're looking at New Beginnings property over on Progress Road and we're talking about Mr. West property. Well, word has done it now. Jim Smith said last week, they got more on the heels looking to annex in or rezone. Because why? They're all chasing that same money. We're all, they're all, that's what they're here for. We don't need, Mr. Collins said we need seven hundred units. Mr. Beatty said we, they, they were looking at a hundred units of housing yesterday. Looking at eight hundred units, that's on top of a hundred and something that is already in the works in all the forest, according to Jim's report today. And we've got forest subdivisions that are in different phases we just heard about. We are not lacking housing, but let me tell you that according to Wilson Pruitt, housing, the median sales are down twelve point eight percent. We're seeing a correction in the market because the free market works. We're seeing, um, sales volume down thirteen point two percent. We're seeing housing cost adjustments here. We, this is basically, we've gone, with this Lytech, we've gone from project based, uh, gone to project based, from tenant based section eight, okay? It used to be you go apply for a voucher, you're the home, you're the person needing housing, you would go get section A, section A voucher. Not anymore. They get the section A and you just have to apply for the voucher. And it's a voucher, so I'm sorry, a tax credit. Let's be honest with ourselves, what we're dealing with here. Mr. Collins, last week, I heard the same thing and I, and David and I don't agree on a lot, but I think I heard the same thing he did. Mr. Collins was gonna reach out, the DOT was gonna be no problem, some random guy in the audience shouted out, we got it handled. And David's like, well, I guess we got it handled. And this is how we're gonna address, we're just gonna accept that? We're gonna let that intersection there at Mountain View just be chaotic? Because we want to get this corporate welfare passed that for housing we don't actually need? Homeless people don't qualify for Lytech funding. It's not gonna address our homeless issue here, our homeless population. You can't even qual, you have to still have to qualify at that good credit. Pretty sure homeless folks made a series of bad decisions. They ended up, they're up on the streets. They probably aren't gonna have an eight fifty credit score. So they probably aren't gonna qualify for the housing purchases either. Nobody's driving down Courier Street to look at a sign on a fence. It's not even a through street. It's a dead end. Which is what Lytech is. Lytech in this community should be a dead end. It should be ending right here where it's at. And we should stop providing welfare to grown men who just aren't in it for the money under the pretense of solving a local issue that is solving itself according to Wilson Pruitt and all the data. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? If not, we will move on. Brings us to the final adoption of land use ordinance. Final adoption of purchases by the board commissioners, disposal surplus property.
Yes.
Reportman of Member to Kids Cottage. Did Merle ever say that she was okay with it? I think that would be an excellent choice. Discussing possibility of advertising the bid for a new roof for the health department. It does appear that we're going to need a new roof. Is Eric still here?
He went out to take a call.
Okay.
What's the funding source for that? Cause I don't, I don't, we didn't have the budget as yet.
Now, the funding source for that would have to be, you know, we budgeted just short of two hundred thousand in the maintenance budget. Another, I think it was hundred seventy five in capital, was Eric's budget. It'd have to come out of Eric's budget.
And then we had, same to help me, we had some money that we were using for the renovation of eight twenty two industrial board.
I don't think that would be used for the health department. Now, it can be. It's, it's in a general fund, but.
If there's.
If there's any leftover there, we got, I'm sorry, okay. If there's any leftover there, we, we've got a lot of roofs and stuff, Narodix and stuff and so forth over there we got included. But my concern there is that would be the first choice for that money if there's any left. Eric?
Yes.
Health Department roof, you wanna give us some information on that?
What I've seen and what we've gotten, I know we've heard from at least one of the people that part of, I mean, the whole roof needs replaced, we've known that. So it would be health department and learning center part of it. There's part of the sofit and patient stuff. I know one person said that if they did the work, they would include all that in with that. So, I mean, that's, that's where we're at, but it's, I mean, as bad as I, it's been leaking all that. The great thing about the building, the inside of the building's still in good shape and everything in there, the whole building has brand new H D A C. I mean, there's five brand new units. The learning center's got a ten ton unit. We just put four new units in the other. So the buildings, I mean, it would be good to have somebody in there. It just needs to have their roof put on again.
Is that the one that, did you get several quotes for several bids?
We got three.
Just the one in our package. That's, could be used here on my.
I can give you an idea. If you want to know the cost, I can give you an idea what they were. Yeah. Rain man was a fifty six thousand.
I don't know how to find by name. Oh, yeah, just simply.
Okay, top one was fifty six thousand, next one was fifty one, area fifty one thousand, and the lowest one was fifty thousand and change.
Now, these are not apples and apples because some of them had the sofit and other things.
The lowest one was actually the one that said they would take care of fascia and stuff like that on there.
Now, I know that, well, I believe that this does not require a bid. I'm just asking if you want to do that.
Under state law, it would not because it is a repair. Under the local charter, it would because it exceeds or is estimated or expected to exceed fifty thousand, but again, y'all change.
But add off tomorrow, that would be a.
Change. So then to after tomorrow, Friday, as long as it's been appropriated, it's one condition. So you'd have to do your budget amendment. And then as long as there are two.
But wait a minute, when you say the budget amendments, if this comes out of money that we've appropriated for maintenance or capital or any, just generally, we wouldn't have to do a budget amendment?
Correct, correct. As long as it's accounted for in the budget, the charter just simply requires that it, or the revision will require that it had been appropriated and that there are at least two quotes, I believe, that are, or three quotes and that they're similar.
So legally, it's not gonna be required that we get a bid. The question is, do, do y'all want a bid? Or can we just go with the three estimates we have?
I think three estimates are great. I just didn't see the three, but I.
Okay, that, that's something that I put this on here for. Okay. Thank you. Discussion possible action on a D N X action request on partial two oh six seven oh two five. I will start off by saying that I personally have no problem with the end, the end result or the end objective to this. I'm going to go back to my D N X session stuff. We, we did a D N X session and immediately we're given a request for a resoning for that. We had the D N X session and it was noticed. We got them lined up now. I, and I'm, as always, I'm speaking for myself. I am adamantly opposed to people having property in the city, going to the city and saying, I want to do this or that. The city says no. No problem. We're gonna D N X and the county will do it. I'm adamantly opposed to that whole scenario. Now, there are situations where somebody wants to D N X. I don't have a problem with it. And we've seen some of them. We had a D N X session a number of years ago where somebody just wanted to be able to hunt on their property and couldn't do that. So they wanted to D N X because in the county they could. Didn't require any sort of resoning or anything like that, which is my reason, I thought. I don't know that I have a particular problem with it and for resoning if it's a one off, but it can be, you know, people see what's happening and now, and they, they feel like, okay, I'm gonna ask them if they tell me no. I'm just gonna go, well, D N X and the county will do it. I'm not, I'm not there and I don't plan to be there. So I don't know on this. I understand that there's discussion on whether we even can refuse, but, but I don't know. And I've said why, so I'll just open it up.
We're at a conundrum on this because of, of the counsel of two different attorneys. And I favor what our own attorney has said. And I intend to follow his, his guidance in this.
I do want to specify that this is not a, a, that I'm doing, our attorney, I'm. attorney, I'm, I'm not saying that I think our attorney is wrong, I'm saying I like the other opinion better.
I, I know, Charlie, I didn't take it that way.
I, and quite honestly, I'm, I'm disturbed by all the DNaxation, that was not, uh, the intent of myself, and I, I don't know how I'm gonna vote, I, I, on this, honestly, I am reaching out to ACCG for further counsel, um, this afternoon, I have a scheduled phone call, and I, I also could normally take David's suggestions, um, and guidance, and I trust David, so I, I just, I don't know.
Well, one thing on that, I believe, and David, and in your opinion, uh, I believe there was stipulation that if the county could show heart, we could...
Actually, it's the city, that's the way the legislature is written, uh, it's, uh, in my opinion, that, that statute's not well-written, and in fact, I've got a draft email that I've run and proposed to the board to send to our local representative, to see if maybe they could get legislative counsel to clean it up a little bit, so that it would give us a net. Uh, uh, the statute just simply says the county can consent, I believe is the word, and they can, it's in front of their can consent, and it doesn't give any, any criteria for that, so it's arbitrary, capricious, uh, there's just a lot of things that are worrisome. But yet, then, after the county has consented, then the se- the city, they can look at the standard of sa- and sa- uh, safety, health, and welfare of its citizens, so the city can then establish that factually. Uh, so, and that is my concern with that particular statute, I feel like. And I went back and I looked at this a little bit last night, there were some articles that were written in some publication, and of course, these are newspapers, so we, you know, they don't tell the whole tale, but the legislature, the, what was being shared in those articles is that the legislator, legislature intended to allow a city property to move into the county's, and that's the terminology that they used, or quoted, so, because ultimately, city property is county property in some respect, like, ci- cities, city pays, the city citizens pay the county taxes, in addition to the city taxes, the city collects to impose abhorrent taxes, not all cities do, as we know. So, um, and I'd be, I, I'd love to hear what ACCG said, that really what, the biggest question is, what guidance can the county use to decide to deny, uh, the annexation request? And, and Charlie, when I looked also, the arbitration provisions that they built into annexation aren't applicable to DNaxations, it's only as to DNaxation.
Right, right.
So, um, that's the other concern I have. It, 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 it needs further development, and if this, this board and the cities in a difficult position, the city of, has though the standard to look at, which is the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens, y'all could elect to incorporate that into your own evaluation, as to whether you wish to consent to it or not, but the statute doesn't necessarily quite do so.
Personally, I, I do, for myself, elect to incorporate that in. You mentioned that there's no real standards, uh, in place here, and typically, and correct me if I'm wrong, but when an attorney says there's no standards, what he's really saying is there's no case law.
Well, if there's no case law, the statute doesn't give you any guidance, yes, this would be new territory.
So, what I'm saying is, rather than go, have Gilmer County become a, um...
Dumping ground.
Well, how, how could I apply for a second fiddle? Well, let's just say second fiddle, uh, melting pot for everything that gets denied in the cities. I'd be willing to go down that road to citizen case law, personally.
And, and that's the board's decision to move forward if they decide to do that in that respect?
Actually, I was gonna say dumping ground, so I'm just gonna say it. Um, okay. Do we need any further discussion on that?
Not for this.
Okay. All right. Discussion possible action on budget amendments, Sandy. Put ahead and, uh, each other, okay?
Uh, I didn't know if it'd be appropriate, I'm, I'm just making it myself available, um, if I need to provide any clarifying remarks about the, the item that we just covered, um, I'm more than happy to do so.
Okay. And, and that, that is appropriate, and let me say too, that, you know, a lot of times, these things kinda get personal, they shouldn't. I have the utmost respect for John, this is not about that, this is about the DNaxon, DNaxation, and follow up from that. Okay, Sandy?
I ask you, when I add that to the agenda, thinking that I might have some, um, numbers, you know, I wanna get this on your radar at the end of the year, well, once the audit is done, a lot of times, we will have adjustments to make, either to make or not make, to the, um, budgets, the twenty twenty-four budgets, so I just wanna get that on y'all's radar, but I don't have title numbers for those yet, so.
Okay.
We may need to just put it off until next month.
We'll just put it on, Jim?
Okay.
For Jim as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Sandy. Discussion possible action on fiscal year twenty-six Amber connections contract. Um, I just realized, kinda late in the game here, that that contract is about to expire. Uh, it's a one-year contract, uh, it expires, uh, their fiscal year, I suppose, uh, in a couple of months, and, um, it just seems like we're always, uh, behind times on some of these contracts, and I want him to get out ahead of this one, so, just see, uh, if y'all have any thoughts on being okay with that, for us, just go ahead and extend this one.
I'm fine with it.
I'm as well.
Okay, just wanna make sure. Um, I will, um, I will ask for a vote on that, or I saw him bring this up again. Okay. Okay, uh, does anybody need, uh, executive session?
Yes.
Uh, action anticipated?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Not the personnel.
Then, uh, motion to go on executive session for personnel with no action anticipated?
Second.
I'm in favor.
Fine.
All right. Thank you, folks, we do appreciate it.